Congratulations. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any change or distress.
Father, we thank you again for the opportunity to be here to help administrate this county, the fiscal issues that we have to work on. Thank you that we live in a society like this. We see what's happening in Syria this weekend, and thank you that we can resolve disputes with hawking instead of guns and pitchforks. It's a... We really appreciate that we get to look at, and we thank you, Lord, for that opportunity. We ask for your blessing as we make decisions and think through anything and everything in accordance with your will. Amen.
You should have all had a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting. additions, corrections, deletions.
I'll move that we approve.
Move for second to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You all should have received an email. I think Julian Rees sent it out. And I think I also sent you the minutes from a past meeting where the discussion was held on the garage for council on aging. And it was discussed at that time that the county should pay for that and own it since it's on county property. The amounts were sent out to everyone. I think council just needs to figure out where they want to pay it from. And I know one of the possibilities that had been discussed was perhaps Rainy Day.
So how much is that total again?
Hundred and...
One eighty-eight.
One eighty-eight something.
So I've been talking to Bree. I mean, it sounds like to me we're gonna have... Help me out on this if you would. We're gonna have some funds and ARPA funds that remain, right? I mean, it's looking like that. That will be enough to do that. I mean, I... That's money that we get to have allocated here very soon, by the end of the year. And so if we can take that money from ARPA, that's the way, that's what I would prefer to do.
Not to interrupt. The unallocated... The other ARPA things that we're gonna discuss today will include using any unused revenues for construction and IT projects in the county buildings. I don't think we will have a hundred and eighty-eight thousand left in ARPA. Right now, we have twenty... For example...
So it's looking like we're gonna use up the unspent?
It will all be allocated and utilized. I am also working on having contracts, and I've got some in already. For example, the consultant for the land use, that's going to be a hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred. That's already the contract I already put in Gateway. So there will be twenty-five thousand or so left out of that that will also go unallocated.
You're talking about, that's actually the county plan though, right?
Yes.
Honestly, if you call it land use, you're gonna...
Well, it's the vision plan, I guess. The vision plan, yeah. So a lot of the numbers that you guys got as an update for ARPA, a lot of that that you're seeing that isn't spent is either already obligated, or they're working on getting any of the contract soon.
Okay, so we are gonna get used mostly then?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's assuming whether both bodies pass the ARPA resolutions that we're gonna discuss.
Okay.
So I think, to answer your question, Fred, yeah. I think we'll have a way to to make sure all that gets used for things we would have had to do anyway.
Okay, well, if that's the case. Actually, don't we have a general fund right now that's in pretty good shape?
We could probably tell you various places besides Rainy Day. We had one other possibility. What else did we discuss besides Rainy Day?
Um, County General Board, what do we have left in that donation fund?
I don't know.
Remind me, this is where we're building the building, and then but there's a lease of some type back? Or no?
We own the land, no?
Yeah, we own the land. And then what's being stored in it? It's like...
All the vehicles. All the vehicles for the Adams County Public Transportation.
Okay.
There was a trade. There was a trade for like two hundred thousand dollars to the Merritt Center to get them updated and swap for the land.
That was a consideration for the purchase of the land, yes. And that particular ARPA is already depleted. It's already been spent.
My question was, do we need eight bays?
That's to house the buses they currently have and any expansion and room for storage and... If you cut a bay down, it's gonna be twelve foot shorter. And not much significant savings.
You're the expert.
Oh, by no means.
Are you checking that donation fund? Rick?
So we have a special donation fund that we have forty-six thousand three hundred dollars left, and that's that one that we were...
Is that like, is that like a one-time donation, or is that something that's just open all the time, or what is that?
It's a one-time donation, and we had big payment to Adams County economic development on that housing initiative program. We gave them like nineteen thousand three forty-nine for two years, but we completed that. We gave them their second year this year.
So what if we use the rest of that?
So that would be what I said.
Yeah, we definitely...
And then honestly, I think we have just got another general fund with it. Rainy Day is Rainy Day, and I don't, I mean, we have a general fund that's in I think, you know, decent shape right now. My opinion.
So you're saying pay what we have in special donation, and whatever the rest of the amount is, pay it out of County General?
That's my opinion. Unless there's another account that's something like that donation account that we wanna finish up or something.
I don't know if we wanna briefly...
We have to find a...
Pause this for a minute and hear the conversations on ARPA because there could be some overlap there before we vote on that.
Yeah.
Because there might be some ARPA money left, depending on what all you guys are presenting. Otherwise, I think that sounds good.
Doctor Pines, you have a table up for a moment?
There's no lease on that or anything, right?
No, there ain't one. The county owns the land and the wall over the building.
But he's talking about the department.
Since they're using it, they're not leasing the space, right?
No, there's, yeah. So Michelle Langrich is the one running it. Obviously, she runs the council on aging, but it's supposed to be separate. And now it's Adams, Adams County Public Transportation. There's no lease related to it.
Because it's their vehicles, right?
Correct.
So their vehicles are going in our property, our building, but there's no lease for their use of it?
Correct.
Well, but technically, it's... The city for the Merritt Center. Transportation, right?
Yeah.
So it is, they are our vehicles.
Oh, they are our vehicles, so.
You wanna come back to that after we...
I think we...
Something to think about, you know?
Because if these, if these all pass the way that they're ridden, then all the funds will be used.
Okay. But...
Matter of fact, we won't have enough to pay for one of them. He'll just pay for as much as he can until it's gone.
Well, if you don't mind, if we can just real quickly go through that one so we can just make sure.
We have several, so which one do we wanna go through first?
Well, I mean, I can kind of start going through. So the first one, I can pull up their actual resolution. But briefly, so it'd be a resolution for additional ARPA funds. The IT department through Mike Brown requested an additional sum of seven thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents for the Geneva IT project.
Clayton, that changed to twelve thousand five thirty-three thirty-three? He sent another email that it was higher than what he had first thought. Is that right, Mike? Twelve five thirty-three thirty-three?
Hey, one question I have about that, Mike. I mean, they do understand that ultimately after this, it's all gonna fall on them, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you would need a motion, a second, and a vote on Resolution twenty twenty-four dash eleven.
And you said now that I...
No, yeah, dash eleven.
I have to correct this now, so the correct number is twelve thousand five hundred thirty-three and thirty-three?
Correct. Correct.
So I have a proposed resolution for that additional appropriation out of ARPA funding, which would be Resolution twenty twenty-four eleven.
And this is for Geneva? That's the version?
So moved.
You can second it for approval for the resolution as presented. All those in favor?
Who seconded, Kathy?
This way. Did you change it? Last minute change of due date.
So, yeah, we got a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four national.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Amen.
You wanna sign first? You wanna sign? Which one do you wanna do next? I can just go into the next one, which would be Resolution number twenty twenty-four twelve. Short title, be a resolution by the County Council of Adams County, State of Indiana, obligating ARPA local recovery funds within the Adams County Fiscal Recovery Plan for use in information technology infrastructure in construction projects for Adams County Government. Again, with the fact that we have to have ARPA funds obligated prior to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, that are forfeited, this resolution would essentially obligate the remaining, any and all unused ARPA funds to infrastructure, being IT and physical infrastructure projects within the county buildings here.
And Mike and Rick are working on a contract, I believe, with Blakenham Electronics because there are things they already have in the pipeline to do, which is going to cost more than whatever the unused are. But this will at least take care of a portion of what they have to do before we have to start paying for it some other way.
So the stuff that we already have budgeted, or?
Yeah.
And so it's for the buildings.
Okay, so instead of paying it through it with the, how we maybe originally budgeted it, we're just doing it with ARPA instead? Okay.
You know, it's not gonna cover everything.
Right, but we, since we have money budgeted for it, though, it's really not an issue then? Okay.
I think the good thing is, Fred, it allows us to get the contract in.
Right.
And obligate it so we don't lose it.
I get that, okay.
Have we received actual bills for this, Mike?
No, we haven't started on it. Well, we started on some stuff prior, prior to the year, but this is a continuation of improvements and so on on to courthouse and this. So it's mainly, if you wanna know, Dennis, it's mainly door locks and so on, because we have a security issue with our teams. There's a lot of pieces are out through the decades. People not having it and so on. Physical.
We have to. We have obligated it.
So how much is this, this one right here?
This one would just be more of a...
Whatever's left.
Whatever's left.
Okay, we're allowed to do that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, Dave.
Hold on, does this exclude the flagpole work that John came up with?
No, because if the flagpole gets approved, that'll just be that much less that they have to do this.
Okay.
Correct. This will go after anything else.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to twenty twenty-four twelve. Resolution. Except Resolution twenty-four, twenty twenty-four twelve as proposed.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye. Aye.
Posed.
There's a contract for that flagpole. If you need a copy of the... Of the program. You have, was there a resolution for that? You have that one?
Yes, yes.
It would be what, thirteen? I'll need that one, because I don't have the...
Fred, yep.
And if they approve it, just pass it on.
We're still, we're still doing ARPA stuff. Wait, guys, we're still doing ARPA stuff.
Okay, then related... Corey's question about the flagpole. So Resolution twenty twenty-four thirteen, short titled, being a resolution by the Adams County Council appropriating funds from the Adams County ARPA COVID-19 Local Fiscal Recovery Fund to pay for the cost to acquire and install a flagpole for the Adams County Courthouse. The appropriation for acquiring, acquiring and installing a flagpole at the Adams County Courthouse would total nine thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars. And we have a contract actually already here attached from Furman Electric.
This definitely gets it working again, and...
It's, it's not installing a flagpole. It's being, basically, installing a motor that can be electronically controlled instead of, I don't know how many people have been up there, but it, it's a ten, fifteen-minute trip. And depending on the weather, if you go up to there, you know, on a cold day, it's gonna be not a good time. But this is gonna be a completely customized, there's gonna be a mounting bracket that goes to the current ladder that's up there, and it'll be remotely controlled, fully up, down, and half-staffed. And it's gonna save a lot of time and effort for somebody to, you know, go up there and manually raise and lower that flag. And it's, it also encompasses the new light. It's an LED, a narrow beam, fairly high-powered, so you'll be able to see the flag at night waving.
That's again, the whole thing working again?
Yeah, it's...
Thanks for checking that out. I've actually had a handful of people through the last several years ask me about that, so I think that's...
Yeah, I think it's definitely worthwhile. And like I said, last time, you know, whether we move forward with the new judicial center or, you know, stay where we are, we still need to... And this will go, obviously, back to the commissioners for approval too. And the location for the switch, I'm not sure how familiar you guys are with the actual courthouse. The second floor, they have an auxiliary court. It's a small, ten by ten, and it's got locking doors, so it can't be controlled by, you know, any random person walking around. You gotta have access to the room for one. And then there'll be a box over the, the actual control unit. So it'll be strictly controlled on, you know, the height of the flag. So, and like I said, it'll be, that'll be up to you guys where you wanna put it, if you guys wanna accept the entire project, but...
And actually, I think several of these are gonna be coming to you guys, and ordinarily, some of these things would have gone to you first. But because we're in December, this, it kinda happened that way.
Well, I just really appreciate John taking the initiative to investigate, to not only investigate the problem, but investigate the solution for the problem. You know, to you, I appreciate that. I went up there, but I just didn't know there was a solution.
I'm with you on that, Stan.
You wanna make the motion now?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to accept the flagpole motor as you.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Posed.
Wait one second, make sure that we... The only other thing we need to reset all of this. And the contract for legal services, that's just an SPO. I'll do that on my time, so yeah, go then.
So do you, do you want to go back to the discussion on the garage now that we know where we're at with the ARPA things?
Yeah, I just have one question on the clerk digital imaging. That, that's a big number, five hundred thousand, and it's got zero spend. Is that...
Two hundred and fifteen thousand is obligated. I have a contract for it. There's another two hundred and six thousand that should be obligated this week. Shelley, Shelley's not feeling well.
But it's in...
She sent me this up. It's in the process, and I think that is actually going to be another one. She's got a, she's, she's got movers to move the stuff. And whatever's left, they're looking at, she's working on a contract for construction of a storage. And that will use all of the ARPA and probably will cost more, which she can pay for over the next five years out of her clerk, perp fund, which can only be used for that purpose. So that is what she's thinking now. So, yes, that one's obligated. The two hundred thousand that you see, as I stated earlier, a hundred and seventy-four five is obligated for that. So I don't, there are some other things, I think. It says there's sixty-one thousand something, I think, in Geneva IT. But Mike already has invoices pretty much all the way up to a hundred and thirty thousand that are either in the pipeline now or will be very soon for the next claim cycle. So I think we're back, Dennis, to the transportation garage for the council on aging vehicles and where to pay that from. So.
Who wants to stand, like?
So there, there are no, we have that donation fund, and there's no other funds like that lingering out there that we would wanna bring to an end?
Do you have the donation fund for any day, County General?
I, my opinion is that we would get, and that, finish off that donation fund and then go to County General instead of any day.
I mean, I guess your other option would be what economic, or, yeah, or lip money, if you wanna take it out of that. You'd have to do, update the order.
I just, you can just go with Fred's, I mean, consider it an investment, you know, of the county.
So use the forty-six thousand whatever out of that.
Second, Fred's motion. Donation in general.
Fred and John. So Bree, you clear on what they're wanting to do, right? You know, I should have done this earlier, everybody, but you're probably wondering who the lady is out here with next to Bree. That is the person brave enough to come in and try to try to work her position. Mrs. Bree's last week. I guess thankfully, she is going to work for our financial software company, Lao, so at least we'll have some contact and so forth. She'll probably most likely be the trainer with everything to do with Lao once she starts that. But Linda Noonan has been hired to do that, and after this week, she will have had a whopping eight days of training. And like Corey said, we're probably lucky to get that many. You can't possibly, you can't possibly learn all of that in eight days. So we're gonna work hard, she and I, on keeping everything going as smoothly as we can, while realizing that, you know, we're losing a lot of knowledge. And I wanna thank Bree probably years that she's given. He came into the auditor's office when I was first elected to council, so so there's a lot of knowledge going, and I wanna personally thank her for all that she's done for the county and for the auditor's office.
John, you wanna repeat your motion again?
It was Fred, actually.
Making a motion to pay for the building for the Adams County Transportation, finishing up a donation account that's, or fund that's in there, and then the remainder out of the general fund. And John seconded it.
And you should have gotten, did you all get the email with all of the amounts on it that those were approved in the commissioners meeting, all the quotes were looked at? So that's already been done. So really, Michelle can get them going.
Got a motion before us? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed.
You can, you can go ahead and go to the grants now if you want, because the other couple of things will be under Clayton's time and under auditor's.
Brad?
Brad and Nate both, they each have one. They're doubling us up.
We're together. Good morning, everyone.
We have two separate grants, right?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Well, you have, for you, two different grant applications that we're working on. It's all part of the Community Crossings Matching Grant for twenty twenty-five. Their call will open up in January of next year. The first project is Bridge One Eighty. It's a, it's a double pipe that crosses underneath. Let's see here if I got my locations right on it. Eight twenty-five south and six fifty west. Total projects, nine hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars. We're asking for your permission to submit for community crossings matching on that project. And then the other is for County Route Three Hundred North from US twenty-seven all the way to the West County line. We're gonna do minor structural repairs and an asphalt overlay on that. We're actually working with the surveyor's office to review the section corners along that road as well as part of that project. So he's gonna partner with us on that, is on top of that. And that project, so one point four million dollar project, almost one point five. And between the two of those projects, that'll exhaust our eligibility for community crossings for next year. So that was bringing in about one point five million dollars of grant funds between those two.
So, and we had discussed it and decided earlier on, you know, go ahead and fund Nate's bridge project fully with it. Then the amount that was left over, we can apply to wedge and level on Street Ten North. That way, we can use that full million and a half between the two of us.
So the, just to be clear, our match is twenty-five percent, right?
Will be over the twenty-five percent between the two projects. So on the Bridge One Eighty, it'd be a twenty-five percent match, or a match would be two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars and some change. On the, on the road project, it's, because it's almost one point five million dollars, the county match would be seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So...
So both of them combined is twenty-five percent, but Nate, Nate will pay just twenty-five percent, and then we'll pay, I think, forty-eight percent is what we'll pay.
Your ideal, your ideal match when you're with community crossings at that seventy-five twenty-five, since they have one point five million dollars in grant, you would end up applying another half a million dollars of local funds, but you'd have to have it exactly at two million dollar total project. Trying to make, trying to hit that target.
Doing it this way, you're maximizing...
To maximize it, you end up going over by a bit, and because of that... To maximize it, you end up going over by a bit. And because of that, we don't really want to do three hundred north from twenty-seven to five hundred west, because that's where we kind of get it ideally. We'd rather do a total project that way.
This is might mention to the council that you that you reported to commissioners how much you got from community crossings.
Oh, yeah.
Because I don't think I don't know if council has heard that.
Point six million and change.
That's a part of the special HSIP, that Highway Safety Improvements Program that the state passed. That was one of the grants that we presented or presented, oh, probably three or four months ago now. Um, but yeah, we went after a pretty big amount on fifty different bridges, gargrail improvements. Um, and the state awarded us. So it's the second largest single project award in the state that they gave. And we were the third largest LPA or public agency to receive funds. So we were third to Indianapolis and Noblesville. So we're running with it.
Those are big numbers.
Big communities and big numbers. So we're the biggest. We're the biggest award of the Fort Wayne District. I met with them on Friday last uh week to kind of go through the project. So we'll be we'll be running with that. So hopefully, everything goes very well. We got the advertisement for consultant selections at this point, but uh thank you. I mean, the total between all the projects.
By comparison, you're doing very well at your position. Glad we got you.
I don't know if anybody looked, but like by comparison, it looks like Allen County got about five point five hundred eighty thousand. So yeah, it's.
We did very well. I mean, between the projects that that Brad and I put together and with your approvals uh last year, I mean, in twenty twenty-four, we got over five point six million dollars in awards between the HSIP, the community crossings, federal aid application. Um, it's been it was a good year. Now, I don't know if we're going to be able to repeat the twenty-five and handle that, but it's a good start and and hopefully it it proves to you all what we're trying to do here with these programs, because I think we can. The money is out there. Let's try to bring it into Adams County for for the for the projects that are on the slate or else.
You know, like what you're doing here, kind of manipulating and and piggybacking on, you know, what we need done. It's it's working out really well.
You got to have a plan showing what infrastructure projects we need. So having a good transportation asset management plan, bridge asset management plan, projects that are looking ahead a few years. I think I've I opened that up. I've had an opportunity to sit down with different ones of you to review what projects I have on the books, Brad as well. So it's good to have that support and vision. And now it just comes down to putting some implementation in place. And this is one of the steps we've got to go through to do that. So.
So we would just need uh approvals on both.
We need a motion to uh um commit matching our part of the matching funds for these two projects, right?
Just essentially authorizing Dennis to sign the grant applications for for these.
This is this is conforming to county policy to have this in hand while he pursues the grant.
So and then I will be then going to the council or commissioners meeting immediately afterwards, signing financial commitment letters, a cover letter that goes along with it, follows more of the state's format of what they want to see. But then we'll also have them ask that they approve the the matching funds as well. So.
Are you making a motion for both grants?
Yes.
Okay. Abby.
Motion in a second to approve the grant approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely. So thanks for all your hard work, commissioners. And we'll be back and probably on that HSIP, since we brought that up. I'll be asking for an additional appropriation, because I have a budget for that match money to to go through. So I'll end up presenting something like that probably at your February meeting, because Austin contracts actually show. So.
Great job. You guys working together is a benefit for Adams County. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Well done.
That would probably be Stan. Is there are there any judicial center updates? Because we, if you remember, y'all wanted on the agenda going forward so that we'd be able to be discussed if we decide to discuss it, or do we have any updates on that for either body?
Well, I I know from our standpoint, we're kind of waiting on a decision from the council as far as financing before the project is explored further. So I know Mark had been in discussions with Jason Semler for bank utility and he's obviously not here today to report on that. So I I don't have anything further than we've done as far as exploring.
Julie Marie sent something.
Yeah, you all would have received an email on what Jason Semler had to say.
Jason's responses to I I think Mark's follow-up questions after the last meeting. Julie Marie sent it to all of you with his responses back on December sixth.
I I rescued it.
Yeah, she just sent those at the end of the week, last week. So I think that those make sense. And I I mean, I personally feel pretty confident that if we want to move forward with this project, we can find a way to fund it through existing revenues and existing budgets. I don't I don't really don't think we need that extra point two percent income tax. I just I I really don't think we do. Think it'll take a little bit of work. I think we can get there. So I mean, that's that's sort of my two cents. Now, I know there's still some lingering questions I keep hearing here and there about is this definitely the right location for it? Are we positive? It shouldn't be the at the jail. So I don't know. I don't I don't know who answers that question or how we get to consensus on that.
I think the committee as a whole you know, pretty much decided that to keep it here.
Yeah, you've got a new office holders coming in that have different opinions that we got to figure out how we're going to navigate coming into January.
Oh, well, yeah, you'll have that rotating every two years.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I guess that's my question is, are we do we want to wait for that? Or do we? I mean, kind of where you're at right now.
Well.
Well, some of the questions that I have is all a form of occasion. Obviously, like John said and Fred said, you know, out of a year and a half of study by the committee with all the stakeholders in our judicial system, we came back to to your body and folk measures with a recommendation. And and that carried no more weight other than a recommendation. So uh ba- based on the financing issue, if uh you give us the go-ahead as far as financing, I would anticipate continuing exploring the project since the last year. Not only the scope of the project, the location of the project.
So is there anything done or not done today that prevents? I know. So we talked beforehand, as John just stated, um, I mean, there was how many people were on that committee? Twenty or so, fifteen or twenty, I think?
Yeah, probably at least fifteen.
And the consensus of that committee was to keep it here in town. So if we go that route, the you know, there's a a property purchase component in there. I mean, are we right now? Are we prevented from doing anything with that as far as like, yeah, not doing or because I I still have some questions off of this. I would actually like to get together. Was it Mark who put this stuff together?
Yeah.
I would like to get together with Mark, maybe a couple other people to discuss that and make to make sure I clearly understand it. Um, but are we? Do we have the information on the property? Do we? I mean, are we preventing preventing anything by not doing anything today?
Well, the the next the next step in in my mind is exactly what Mark appears to explore, and Jason and and the results that they're getting back from them as far as financing. And I you know, once that happens, let let's say if the council says, okay, we we agree to finance this project based on on recommendations that we've seen, the council decides to to move ahead. And and I don't know what format it looks like, whether it's consensus or not, I don't know. But at at that point, we would have to have either either reactivate the committee or form an actual another committee to a study committee uh based on that financing to develop the scope of the project. And there would also be public hearings involved to get input from the general public as we continue to present that part. You know, there that that timeline, I guess I don't I can't give you exactly, but.
Like, do we have options on that property? Do anything like that? Has anything like that happened or?
Nothing that's gonna.
Okay, that's gonna fall apart. And okay, that's all I'm bothering right now. So, okay.
What I'm wondering is if we don't, because like I said, I think we can pay for this with our existing revenue, but we I would like to have a little bit of a better like exactly how are we going to do that? You know, what's that look like? So I don't know. Like you said, maybe we can get together with whoever wants to and really put some pen to paper and try and figure this out. I don't know if that's going to happen before Christmas, but.
I'd really like to put some pen to papers. We know exactly what we're looking at, that service, have more conversation with Mark. So we know exactly where we're at and what numbers we're looking at.
Yeah.
It it might be a little bit more efficient as far as moving that ahead. And and I don't want to tell you how to run your business, but let's say if if you formed a a study committee that met with Mark and Jason, you know, for the sake of the council and the sake of developing a more firm timeline of the financing. You know, then you could bring that back to the full councilors to say, you know, the these are where the dollars would come from. The these are how we would finance it without that point two percent increase. However, you decide to do it in a very matter-of-fact realistic way that would define financing of this project, where you could bring that back to the council. I I guess that's that's much. I'm just kind of thinking it out loud.
This is some good information. I and I've I hear you. Yeah, so, okay. Thank you.
He just takes this long government. It's a it's a big number and what a.
It's a big number.
Lot of horse shuffle around.
Well, it's a big project with a big finance number, and so I think it deserves a lot of consideration. I I appreciate you investing.
What's next?
No.
What's the next county attorney?
All right. I just have two two other items unrelated to ARPA. One will be an amendatory ordinance, and then I'll be numbered. Ordinance twenty twenty-two. Short title is an ordinance of Adams County Council amending joint ordinance twenty twenty-three nine, establishing Fund Four One Two One for Use and supplementing the cost of county construction and remodeling projects. Um, and I'm just bringing this on Julie Marie's behalf, because in her notes state, um, the previous ordinance, which again was twenty twenty-three dash nine.
It didn't have the fund number listed.
Okay, yeah, it didn't have the fund number listed in that, the previous ordinance. So just to correct that air, it would just Dow has the correct fund number, um, just per, I think, SPOA requirements. So I would just request a motion to accept that.
I'll move second.
Corey, Bob?
That gets caught audit.
I think we just I think Julie Marie might have caught it then just.
Actually, I think I think Bree caught the fact Bree thought a fun number and uh we couldn't just go back and.
Yeah, so it's had to be amendered. The only other thing, um, this was a suggestion by the SPOA, um, again, just because with all ARPA-related funds spent or otherwise, there needs to be basically a trail of of written contracts for obligation. So and Julie Marie's notes on that, this say to ensure the anticipated, but as the as of yet uninsured expenses of twenty twenty-five can be paid out of the ARPA funds uh by contract for legal services at Miller, Burry and Brown with a cap of seventeen thousand, which I'm sure is not. ARPA funds will not be used. And as we've already identified, they're going to be used elsewhere, but just more for a a legal paper trail. Um, the SPOA suggested we get this on file and approve before the end of the year.
That's not a new appropriation. We're just approving a contract to go with the previously appropriated.
Correct. So I would just request a motion to approve um that contract for legal services. Um, and then I'll ask commissioners for the same approval later today.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the actual legal services for next year. All in favor?
So I have, thank you, and I'll go to the commissioner.
The commissioner is next and we're last.
Then over the matters after that. I'll have to sign that first.
Okay, we couple things were sent out to all of you. Trying to see what number of resolution we're on after doing. Kathy, do you have the resolutions you guys signed over there? What's the highest number of the one you have?
Last number? Twenty twenty-four, twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Pass this back to.
We do more than that?
Passing that.
Because we did the flagpole, we did the did the flagpole, this is G I T, we did the
Sending them back to you.
Give me just a second, guys. I want to make sure we have these numbers right. That's if it was an ordinance.
We reached writing.
And this. Okay, we'll be ready for twenty-five next, G I T. All right. It's twenty-four. He was doing this if they were. So this would be twenty-two. I'm correcting it. Twenty-two.
That's three.
One mistake. You've got good language down here. Yeah, twenty-four.
If you something.
So we'll be at twenty-five, I think, on the situation.
Numbering is a little bit of a little bit of a station, so, okay. You all should have received the transfers, additional, amended salary ordinance. The only county general additional was election board, it was a general election. It just wasn't enough to pay all the people that we needed for the general election, so that's what that is. Brad's out here if you have questions on the highway, but I think the rest of those are merely appropriating revenues.
I'd like a motion to approve all transfers, and I looked at all the additional, I'm good, the additional as well.
Just transfers, Fred?
And the additions.
And additional? Kathy?
Motion to approve the additional and transfers, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed.
So the only thing left would be the amended salary ordinance?
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah, we'll do that in that. John, do you want to make a motion?
Second.
John, Bob? There'll be three things, the three pages you all have to sign, and you'll need to sign that before you leave. Be over by Kathy. Okay. I think the only other thing that I have would be, it would actually be Resolution 2024-25. Sent out the um declaratory resolution for the designation of regular meetings. You all should have received that, we assume that you just wanted the one day for budgeted options again, or I mean, budget workshop or whatever, so we would just need a motion, a second on that. Kathy?
Second.
That was Resolution 24-25, okay. Good thing I know shorthand.
All those in favor of motion to approve Resolution 2024-25 of P D dates next year, all in favor?
Aye.
That was, that was so much, I'm writing like you here, hope I can read my writing later. Bree, is there nothing else you can think of that I'm forgetting, is there? I think we got everything. Okay, that's all I had then.
Well, the recent passing of former councilman and and commissioner Rex Moore, Stan, you got, you got anything?
Well, it was a sense of condolences to the family, you know, we know the passing of Rex Moore, because I think we've all worked with him at one time or another. Uh he served us as treasurer for two terms, he served us as commissioner for two terms, and also served on the council until he was not able to do that. And, you know, he's been a friend, a mentor to all of us. So, you know, we just really want to thank him for the service that he has given to this county in so many ways. You know, all the while, working as a banker and doing everybody's taxes under brother, and meantime, so he was a hard worker and I think we all look up to him. He will be appreciated, so.
Very well said, Stan, I'd definitely second that, and like, like I said, Adams County, it is hard for sure.
Yeah, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Stan, but I know you you worked with him for a long time, knew him personally really well, so I thought you'd be the the guy to. Yeah. You'll be missed.
Um, I would, I kind of touched on earlier, but I would definitely like to thank Bree for her years of service. She could tell you, I bugged the shit out of her for the first several years. And still do at times, asking a lot of questions, she taught me a lot about how this all works. And so we'll definitely, she'll definitely be missed, and thank you very much, Bree, and best of luck in the future.
Yes, thank you, Bree.
So, and also, I would close by saying, uh, I hope everybody, A, had a, had a very happy Thanksgiving, and I hope you all have a very uh pleasant and merry Christmas, and uh we all have a great 2025.
Before we adjourn, I want to thank Kathy for her last four years on.
Yeah, thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. It was an honor to serve, everything's good, I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas, a very safe New Year, and I'll still be around.
Oh, thank you, Steve, as well, he's, he's uh, got to finish up the year, cheers, so thank you for your service, Steve.
I did, I just want to piggyback a little bit on Fred, and you all have done a lot of work today, the last council meeting of the year, and the year-end of all the ARPA stuff, and I was in on the very beginning of this, you know, the appropriations of all that from the federal government. Between, and I've watched all of the work with council and with the commissioners, and with every department head in the entire county, plus cities and towns across Adams County, and there's always been a lot of work that's gone into that with the first requests, going through council, going through commissioners, sometimes going to commissioners first, then council, back and forth, back and forth, there's a change on the one board or or this or that. Somebody needed to keep track of all that, and it was a tremendous monumental job to keep track of all this. And now you're just doing the last little bits so that we don't have to give anything back, and I commend you all on that, that's wonderful. But I want to give kudos that I've watched to Tony Mellencamp, Regan Rash, all of the incredible monumental, hard work that they have put together in keeping all of you folks straight. Because there are some counties in Indiana, I can attest, that are in a mess. And there are some that have to give some money back because they did not have the organization these two. So, Tony, Bree, and I commend you very highly.
I'll mention Julie Marie as well, Julie Marie was the contact person with Barry, Yeller, Brown, and Bree, Julie Marie, myself, spent a lot of hours meeting and discussing and trying to work all this out. They've brought it up to conferences constantly, still are. Thank you.
The bottom line is Tony Mellencamp's name is on the audits from the state board of the county, and everything is balanced, and I, that's wonderful.
I would like to thank everyone for making me feel welcome, I know I'm new at this, I'm learning a lot, so I do appreciate everybody giving me their input. Oh, my mom's calling. Welcome to Glenda, I know Glenda for a lot of years, she was a cashier and I was a saccharic gerber's number one, so congratulations, so, thank you again, I appreciate it. Jesse, or Phil Bart. Yep.
I think so, I'm just double checking, I don't want to have to call anybody back in to sign anything. Clayton, if you can help me out at the commissioners meeting, whether or not they have to approve, everything was just approved, because I think Julie Marie said, I know she mentioned some in particular.
Yeah.
So, I would you help me keep that straight during the commissioners meeting?
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Very generous to.
Oh, really?
I want to thank all of the people that have allowed us to have a successful year, for your time and talents and all of the efforts that you've expended to make county government more efficient and prosperous. Thank you all for your work, blessings for the seasons, any other matters to be brought before us?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.